Welcome to our board meeting here in the middle school. December, the last school we've been in. Big group of parents and students. Appreciate you being here and enjoying this meeting with us. I'm just looking around the room and I don't have vision values, but I'm liking, I'm liking the excellence and building a better world one student at a time. And it actually goes along right with what we want to do in our school district anyway. So I appreciate those being up here. We would like to excuse Melanie. She is with family and we can get it on camera, but her husband's older than Derek officially coming up. Sorry for those of you who are older than that, including myself. She's in a good place with family celebrating. We're in the middle school. We have some, you know, reports before we get to your report. We want to welcome you.
You want to do that first?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir. Got a couple of student council members from the seventh grade. Come on up, gentlemen. You stand right over here by my side as the wind.
So my name is Johnny Edwards and I'm in the seventh grade student council. So the student council does a lot of things for the school. One of the main things that they do is the old green store. So the teachers give out old green bucks, which they give out to people that are doing kind or nice things to people. And the students get stuff that's called green bucks on things in the store. The second thing that the student council does is they fundraise. One of the main fundraising things that the student council does is dress up sessions. Another thing that they're doing in the holiday season this year is the Christmas candy bears, which is an annual thing. Another thing that the student council does is red ribbon week celebration. They do spirit days with red ribbon week that are dress up days that the student council sends out for the school. Student council also makes posters for this red ribbon week celebration. Finally, the student council also does a door decorating contest for the student counter. Another thing that the student council has done this year is elect a new status of sixth grade student council members.
My name is Tripp Clary and I'm a part of the student council seventh grade. And basically what's up and coming is the Super Bowl of carrying canned food drive. So we give canned food to truck drivers. And we also do a teacher appreciation week. It's where we all focus on our teachers who are doing this hard work for us and giving us many good lessons. And it's the end of the school year dance. So basically after all this hard work of school, we all plan a dance and what it should be like. So we set it up and we do all this stuff and get it ready. We also hire a DJ and then it's a way to say goodbye to the school.
Good job, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is Greek free English. They'll speak about Tech Girls. And to introduce them is Ms. Saye.
No, just tell me how I'm your clerk.
Keep it close to your back with help. It's part of the period.
Oh, okay. These girls are here to talk to you about Tech Girls, which they attended the last two years. And they would like it to continue.
Okay, so we're here to talk about Tech Girls. I'm Ellie Januus and this is my second time going to Tech Girls. I've always loved learning about STEM in many ways. And I'm 12 years old. 12 years old and love that experience. You get to bond with friends and people you do.
I'm Harper Seehan and I've gone to Tech Girls for two years, sixth and seventh grade. I loved all the classes at Tech Girls and learning about STEM and future careers and all and more. It was fun to meet my friends and learn about all of that and I will always remember it.
I'm Eric Clinton and I'm a student at Weasor Round School. I have been, I have had the opportunity to go to Tech Girls for the past two years. And I love just going to the College of Idaho and attending all of the STEM classes of my choice. These are the reasons we need to keep Tech Girls.
Reason one is science. Well, we were there. We got a bunch of classes that were listed and more that were about science that helped us learn about careers and something to do with it, how it's in our lives.
Reason two is technology.
We love going to STEM and learning about technology because all the classes that we get to go to always tie back and they educate us on how technology can be used in school and in our daily lives.
Reason three is engineering. We learned all about how it helps us in our lives and with all the buildings. And there's some classes that said that when we got to build some things, it was fun.
Reason four is math. In math, like just we need it in every day in the future. So math was a big part of Tech Girls.
Also, in Tech Girls overall, it's just so fun and exciting. And it's just a great part to have. It just helps with our daily lives all throughout until like we're adults. This helps us with all of our daily work and it's just great. And then plus we get to bond with people that we don't know.
Thank you for listening and we hope that we get to keep Tech Girls, keep going each year. And that girls younger than us will keep getting to go to.
As minors, they didn't slide through, so they put these slides together.
Thank you, students. I appreciate seeing you and having you participate. You can stay for the rest of the meeting or if you feel like you're bored enough, you can go too. All right. Let's get, let's go right to our agenda. Our first, first part of our agenda is actually superintendent reports and then administrative reports.
Mr. Chairman, a few things I know are kind of stretching the time today. I want to start out with something that's not too, not too happy. I'm sad to report that I received another complaint from a parent via the Freedom From Religion Foundation in which they complained about open prayer here at the middle school during the VFW ceremony. So I called our attorney and our attorney advised me that there's to be no more open prayer. So I'll buy the VFW, no more open prayer. On a happy note, as you know, the lower foundation has really blessed us this year. Our district as well as Weasor in reference to the money they've allotted and helping us and the city do different things. First of all, you remember that they, they gave us $25,000 for that new stand up, the platform for the graduation that's ADA compliant now. They also thanks to Kyla funded us for $2,625 worth of Spanish books. And they also thanks to Marcy funded us for Park School playground upgrades, which included new fencing, new soccer stuff and new baseball, new baseball field. Anything I'm missing?
Four square.
A new four square area from a local guy that does our painting for us. So lower foundation has really done a great job for us this year. 13 December, next Friday, we'll have our first long awaited GT program meeting, Gifted Talented Program. We had one prior to COVID, haven't had one since then to speak up, but we're getting that fired back up. And we'll have a meeting on the 13th of December, this Friday to go from there. Last but not least, on 13 December from 5:00 to 7:00, will be the administrator, board, social, Christmas social at the depot, just like last year. So it's your questions up, that's all I have. And because of time, if you have any questions for the administrators, please just fire away.
I wonder if we're the trade shop.
$800.
Nice.
Yeah, I put question marks on my report. So I was able to get that dollar amount with $800. Okay, good job, reports. Appreciate seeing you.
Yeah, thank you.
Information, great information. Because our meetings have changed, we're changing the, due to policy and from the state, we change our comments. So if there's, did we have any community comments? And so we will turn to WA. Have any?
I'm here this time. I have notes. So I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. I'm really sorry no one was able to make it last meeting. I had a funeral. It was, it was just nice. We recently held a meeting where we discussed the importance of members getting involved in the IEA and their state activities so that Weasor and smaller districts have a say and more of a voice. So we have someone going to lobby day and we have a couple individuals interested in attending delegates assembly. So it's really exciting for us. We had a really productive conversation with Mr. Doolin about some of our concerns that the teachers are facing, particularly regarding the reasons there are many who are considering leaving, not only our district, but the profession in general. Sorry, I'm getting a little emotional about this. We understand like steps are being taken to address some of the challenges we've been facing. But I just wanted, or we just wanted to make sure that like we're transparent with the board, because we're the communication between the teachers and the board. So it's not meant, this isn't meant as a criticism to the district or any administrator or anything in general. It's just what reasons teachers are potentially going or thinking of leaving the profession and the district. And I just, I feel like we, it's nice to be aware of it. And I know that there's problems and I know we're working on. And like I said, we, I've had a conversation with Mr. Doolin about this. And we've talked and we're working towards solutions. So don't take this as a we need to fix this. It's, I want you to be aware of this. So, sorry. There's a lack of support for non-special education student behaviors. And I have this all typed up if you guys want a copy of it. I made copies. We're facing increasing disruptions without adequate support or students being held accountable for their behaviors. And they're starting in like kindergarten, behaviors are starting. And if we're not able to get a handle on it in kinder, it just has been escalating. And we've been seeing that with Park School. And I'm so happy that you guys have implemented an if this, then this and the GUTA thing and it's helping. So like I said, we are coming up with solutions and it's going to take time. We have some massive disrespectful students, which is going to happen. We have limited time to teach. In the elementary level, we have students being pulled out for various interventions, reading, math support, speech therapy, special education services. And while all of these are essential, they significantly reduce the time available for our core instruction, which creates like a cycle of teachers not being able to fully teach the foundational concepts when they're first introduced because the students are missing due to other essential things that they need. And then it just makes the question of if we were able to teach those skills, would we need the interventions? Insufficient planning time, and this is always going to be a problem, like I said. It is what it is sometimes, but I'm just stating reasons. We're overwhelmed. The responsibilities of lesson planning, differentiating, grading, tracking, student progressing, progress monitoring, communication, sometimes it just leaves them scrambling to keep up, making it harder to focus on what matters most and that is the students. Lack of resources for managing special education behaviors. And while we've received training, and I spoke on this before, on how to recognize escalated behaviors and how to address them theoretically, we really need to work on what we have at our school to address this behavior. And obviously there's going to be instances where we can't come up with it. And it's just going to happen and we'll deal. But I think there's some things we can do to help come up with a plan for when a classroom has to evacuate, that teacher gets a minute to decompress and deal with their own feelings before they have to deal with the 20 other students' feelings who had to witness whatever behavior went on in the classroom. And then I, we feel that there's a really a need, I keep saying I, but I don't mean I. There's really a need for a vice principal at Pioneer and Park. Both Pioneer and Park schools are in urgent need of advice. They have as many, if not more, students than the high school and middle school. Yet we're staffed with fewer administrators and counselors. And without additional leadership, managing the growing behavior issues at the elementary level will continue to place pressure on the middle school and high school as well as won't be able to solve any issue. Oh, sorry. Just trying to get through it, guys, sorry. While the vice principal's not going to be able to solve all the issues, having an extra person in the administrative role would significantly improve support for managing behaviors and help create a more stable school environment. And these are just some of the challenges that are contributing to the growing frustration and burnout among teachers, leaving many feeling unsupported and overwhelmed. Addressing these issues is critical to retaining experienced educators and ensuring that students receive the best education that we can give them. I want to thank you again for your time and attention to these matters. And I really look forward to working with you guys on open dialogue and helping to solve the world's issues because I know it's not just a Weasor issue either. That's it. Do you have any questions or?
You said you have a slideshow?
Yes.
Can you email that to us?
Yes. You want to email? Or I can give you a copy now, sorry. You want to take one and pass it off?
I look forward to hearing some of your proposed fixes for those things. Because like you say, it's not going to happen overnight. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. Does everybody have an opportunity to look at the minutes from the last meeting?
There were two minutes.
Oh, that's right, our executive session.
They didn't have, but nobody gave me the times. I didn't have the time to fall out of, but I've got it in here now, so.
Any questions? Any changes to our current agenda that were, I know we made some earlier, but any other changes?
Well, wait, sorry. On the December 2nd. Says my vote was not recorded?
You know what, I am so sorry.
It's okay.
I was in here in my cymbal and then this thing kept coming up telling me I needed to reboot. So I'm rebooting, so I can't even look at what I'm doing.
It's okay. It just says. Yeah, it says next to me, it just says vote was not recorded.
On which one?
On the December 2nd. For going into the executive. There's only, yeah, only one. It's under, on the second page, says the trustee spelled out of executive session at 7:30. And then the second page has motion made.
I just must have clicked the wrong button. I'll change it to yes.
But anyway, it was yes.
I know, I know it was.
Any other things? Mr. Doolin, retirements, resignations?
No, sir.
Any staff desire?
No, sir.
Financial report. Is Barb here? What did you clear back there?
It was a seat.
All right, you have the summary of the financials in your board packets. We did receive our November 15th payments. So at this point in time, we received just right at 80 to 81% of the funding that we're going to receive from the State Department of Education for salary based apportionment. So the two IC reports that we've submitted to this point are the critical ones because it establishes the number of teachers that will be funded for as well as the placement on the career ladder and the average salary for the teachers that we currently have on staff. It establishes that baseline to multiply through the support units in order to determine how much our income from the State Department of Ed will be. And very sad to report that we budgeted on 74 units. We're looking like we're going to be closer to the 72.8 funding units after protection is put in place. We'll know by the end of the week what that protection level is. And also based on the number of brand new teachers to the Weasor School District, our average salary that we budgeted on is also considerably less. So right now, our projected income is about $250,000 less than what we had estimated when we did the budgeting process last April. There are still some fine tuning issues being done to all of the averaging across the state. And that's where our protected units will be determined. And so we'll know by the end of the week pretty much where we are and if there's any adjustments we can make to anything. But right now I'm projecting a $250,000 decrease in revenue over what we budgeted. So that's not great news for us, but we're still early enough in the year that we can control some spending and some of those kinds of things. So as you look through your general fund, you know, we have the typical items where we've been being over budgeted because we just need to make those in February when we get our first true up on our actual allocation for this year rather than estimates. We'll look at doing a budget revision so that we can correct some of these light items that are showing over the 25%, which is where they should be at this point in time. One of the areas that you see that we are at 60% is in capital assets. And that is we purchased a new sprayer unit for grounds. And we've also purchased, we're planning on a pretty heavy winter. So we purchased an additional snow blade to go on the front of another truck so that we have three trucks that can push a blade. So that's the, those are the big things on the first page for your general fund. As you look at the second page on our federal funds, there's, I am concerned about our special education spending. You know, I hear that we're doing a lot and we spend a lot on special education kids. But we are very heavily spending money right now in those areas. Spent is one of those really difficult situations because if the student has the need or required by law to fulfill that need and pay for that need, whether or not there's federal funding available and whether or not there's Medicaid reimbursement available. So I bring that to your attention because the general fund does have to come in and balance out the special education fund if there are insufficient federal and Medicaid dollars to pay those. So it's not that our spending is out of control. It's that the needs of our students are very expensive. So just bringing that to your attention. And then the other line item that you see on there is the school modernization fund. We have received $4.725 million. And that's just in the 30 days that we've had it earned $18,871 in interest. While the school modernization money itself can only be sent on capital projects, I mean, like a massive project like replacing all of the light bulbs in the school, bringing them up to an LED higher luminance and all of that kind of stuff, that's considered a capital expenditure project. But fixing onesie twosie lights here and there, fixing broken windows, school modernization money cannot be used for those types of things. But the interest that that fund generates can be used for that. So that's why that $18,000 number is a really important one to us. Because the state no longer funds, we no longer receive directly the lottery funds like we used to. And that's where we paid for the maintenance of our buildings was through those lottery funds. So that $18,000 that we receive in interest is where we will pay for those basic upkeep of our buildings and some of those kinds of things. So unless you have any questions for me, that is my report.
All right, financial, let's see. Approval for the payroll bills. Usually ask Melanie how things are going. Any questions with those attachments? Any questions on bills that we have to pay? Okay, having gone through the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, except the consent agenda is presented.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made in second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Didn't we used to say pay the bills? All right, first item for action. We need to talk about some signatures for our Park School checking account.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's take off one, add one. Take off the old secretary, add the new secretary. And her name again is Jennifer Shanahan. Ms. Shanahan, Jennifer Shanahan.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions? It does take action.
Okay, I approve that we approve the new signatory for Park School checking account. Don't use their name.
I'll have it in.
It's all Shanahan.
Yes, yes. We just have to have this so that the base will have happened as per.
John, would you second that?
I'll second. Motion's been made in second and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to, I believe that we're going to go into an executive session. But Mr. Doolin, can we just use the conference room and let everybody stay here? And then we can go down to the other room and do that.
It's attached to the minutes.
I think he's wondering if you can have a coffee because we're going to a different room.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're going to take our.
We will, we will be back. Do we need to go into this exercise? Do we need to go into executive session? Okay, so, anybody that would like to, yes, other than having any, we have, we will have, we will have some discussion items, so we will talk about. Sure, let's, let's make a motion.
So, I, someone wants to.
I make a motion that we move into executive session for item code seventy-four dash two.
I second that.
Who's executed, John?
Yes.
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 Okay, we are in executive session six oh one.
Look at the crowd! Um, so just following out of, of executive session, um, just for, for, for official purposes, is there any, any action that needs to be taken place at this time? Having noted, we will take no action and move on with our agenda, which is the discussion items. Does anybody, before we talk about, um, the convention that we went to, does anybody have any future items that they would like to see on the agenda for next time? No? Okay. Uh, probably, it's, it's discussion items, but our next meeting, is okay if I talk about what our next meeting is so that we understand? So we.
We can do that, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, so we are going to, um, well, first of all, we have some things that they, they were in our emails and things, but this week we got our Christmas party, uh, eighteen?
No, the thirteenth.
Thirteen, thirteen, I have the curvature.
At the, at the train depot.
At the train depot, same as.
And it's just drop in and come when you can.
Okay, thank you, because everybody keeps saying same as last year, so like, I don't know.
No, it's just, it's just hors d'oeuvres, and it's pretty just casual, just come in, visit, head out, sell for free, if you can, stay for fifteen minutes, stay for the whole two hours, it's a beauty, okay?
And we also have the next, a, with the future.
Oh, the district social, the district cookie social is the following Wednesday, gosh, I don't have my calendar.
There's the eighteenth.
Okay, that's the eighteenth, and that is at the high school at the library, and that is with all of our staff, and we kinda have some fun giveaways, and, and, um, it's just cookies, and we do have that, for those people that are trying to stay healthy. But, um, but yeah, eighteenth at the high school, and we would really like it if you could come to that, too. And tomorrow is the day for the distribution of the hams, and the.
Cards.
Cards are from, so many, um, people will probably be thanking you for the ham or the gift card, and you will know why they did.
Awesome.
It says it's from the Weezer Board of Trustees.
Appreciate it. The other item that I would just like to visit real quickly is our next meeting, um, official meeting, we are going to be meeting January ninth. And that is.
No, the ninth is a Thursday, that's our work session.
The ninth is, yeah, the ninth is Thursday, and it's a work session.
From eleven to one.
And we will have a lunch, a lunch meeting, maybe one all night. And then our regular board meeting will be this same second Monday, January.
Thirteen, yeah.
And during that meeting, we will reorganize our board if needed, if wanted, we will, um, reschedule which days to, um, if, if early, if it's different, if we're like Mondays, Mondays will stay that way, but all that kind of things, and the board clerks and things, there's lots of, it's a, it's a business.
It's a reorganization of the board, we have to do it every January, state statutes tell us that we have to, and you elect your chairman, and you elect your vice chairman, and your treasurer, and again, you were saying the time and dates of your meetings, and so that will be established, and we'll print that out. And posting, that's another thing that we have to determine where we're gonna post our, our notices for the, for the meetings. So, it's just a formality usually, and if you are, any of you are interested, probably get in touch with Mr. Brush to let him know if you're interested in wanting to serve as a officer. I don't, I think everybody's willing to run, but that might change.
Okay.
So, I'll be calling in, but Alex won't be here, that will be fine. And you can, hopefully I'm calling in, my plane is supposed to land at I-15, if we see. Bye-bye. Um, the, the, uh, if, if you are not, and there's for some reason delay, there is a code of ethics that, that you sign at the first of each me, of this meeting, and so if, and we have to have signature, make it down file, so we could do that at the end of our meeting if you're not able to attend that one. Okay, yeah, you're fine, you're fine.
Three and a half years, ladies, I'll, well, I know we're not supposed to be texting, just, I'll put my phone close, it's an open text.
Okay, okay.
We can, we can answer, so we can call it. Life happens. All right, that, just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what is coming, any changes, anything. So, we last meeting, we discussed, uh, putting on the agenda, the twenty twenty-four ISBA Convention retail. Um, we, we all, every one of us attended the ISBA, and it's just an opportunity for us to, to, everyone else, most of us, John, I, you know, just the times.
We felt like you were there in spirit, yeah.
We did, we did, we were learning, we were trying to learn from you, but that's one of the, and the, which is one of the reasons why we want this on the agenda, so we can have, have some discussion about what we learned, um, some of the things that we could do better, some of the things that we already do better.
Well, I, I have to, I gave each of you a brochure, what did I do, a brochure? For, um, that get on board, this is a continued training, I mean, any training that you do is good, and if you're interested, that, these are six, um, webinars, and the dates that they have, and I believe, Avery and I were just talking, I believe if you're not there for the live, you can actually be there for the recorded, um, and these are reimbursable for your training, and honestly, they, they look like six really good topics, so, I mean, um, that's kind of, it follows along, Mr. Walker, about some of the seminars that you could go to during the ISBA convention, this is kind of some of their, some of their seminars that you could look at.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll let me know right away so I can, if you're wanting to, to have you sign up for it, because there is a cost, and so we can sign you up, and then it's reimbursable, so you're not spending district money, making way from, it's reimbursable from that continuous improvement that the, the, the state legislature allows. They allow $6,600 a year for board training, and so this is one of those allowable expenses, so we get reimbursed.
True.
So if you're interested in that, would be great, and we did get some reimbursable two thousand twenty-four, and thank you for signing up when you went to those classes at the ISBA convention, because those classes that were reimbursable, we are gonna get money back for those, and we did get a little bit of money back for some travel costs as well. And those are FY twenty-five, they are from, um, July to June expenditures, so we are mid-year on, on our reimbursement for the $6,600, and we probably only accessed about $1,200 of that, so we'd love to have some training. If you guys are interested in anything, let me know. I just, it's really funny, though, the board, I mean, the, it's, uh, the allowable expenditures or reimbursable expenditures are sometimes a little tricky, so, um, even though they're good seminars, they sometimes aren't reimbursable seminars, so, most of the ISBA ones are.
Any topic that you would like to visit about coming from the conventional?
I just know that, like, there were three main things that I got from it. I thought it was great, I enjoyed it. Um, I went to, I couldn't tell you the name of the, um, course, but it was talking about working on your, um, mission and vision and goals, and, um, it was a school district leading it, and they said that they had their individual schools, each school came up with their own mission, vision, and goals, and each department, like lawns and transportation and maintenance, everybody came up with their own, and then they presented that to the board, and the board even came up with their own, and then, um, the board used everybody to come up with the district-wide mission and vision. So it was kind of like, you know, working from the ground up, letting the people who are in it create, and I thought that was a really good idea, I thought that was something, because we definitely need to work on ours, so I thought that was a great idea.
If I may, thinking about, I was also in, it was Coeur d'Alene, that school district, and, and some really good valid, um, reasoning for the reason they decided to go that route as bottom up instead of top down. But the one that kind of stood up to me was the buy-in that they received from the teachers, because they became responsible for their own department's mission, vision, and values, and how that incorporated itself from, from ground-level third-grade education team to the Pioneer School District, to, you know, all the way up through the district, how their mission, vision, values incorporated itself all the way to the top of the, top of the chart. And, um, so that really stuck with me on that one, and, uh, and because they did that, they're actually seeing improvements, this is, as all the school districts will go there, I'll tell you, we're seeing improvements, right? But they had hard numbers to indicate that their, the buying and receiving from their teachers wasn't improving kids' scores. Uh, just something to think about as we, as we move into a reorganization next year, as we contemplate going through our mission, vision, and values, and possibly updating that in the future. Think about.
That was it?
That was all I had from that one. I mean, I have two more.
Let's hear them.
Do you want me to keep going? Okay. Oh, in one of the workshops, there was just a good idea that I got, and it, um, it was talking about, they were talking about when listening to public input, how we as a board can't, like, we can't interact, we can't really, we can't, you know, if someone comes and they have a concern, um, we can't resolve it, you know, right there. And so, sometimes that appears to the public like we didn't really do anything about it. And so they said the way that they handle it is the chair says, you know, thank you so much for your comment, your, the information, um, I will have the superintendent look into that more and get back to you, if it's something that needs follow-up. Um, and then at the next meeting, it's in the agenda, and there's just a little blurb of, you know, how it was handled, or, or what we did to, anyway, I thought that was kind of a good idea.
Just as a follow-up?
Yeah, just as a follow-up, but I think sometimes we miss that little bit of communication with our community, you know, there, there's a question or a concern brought up by someone, um, but then there, we're not really sure what came of it.
We need to back out.
Yeah.
How it was handled.
Yeah, anyway, I thought that was a good idea.
Communication, public, public communication, true.
And then, one of them I went to was about community work groups. You know, I think we do, our schools, we do a lot of, like, I know there's for the calendar, there's a committee, you know, we do committees to try to figure out things, but this one was involving the community, um, in work groups, so it's not a committee. And I, I don't know if I could really give you an example or something, um, but say, say there was something we're trying to figure out, like, we have Gifted and Talented, uh, coming up, there's a meeting about that, you know, and I'm sure one of the issues that we're gonna face is how do we, where do we fit that in, you know, how do we fit that in? That could possibly be a community work group where, um, you know, our admin, uh, choose, reach out to maybe some parents that can be on the work, in the work group, or if it involves, if it involves our community, you know, um, we could work, reach out to community members that might be able to help us with things, or have different perspectives on things, and, um, they just talked about it being super beneficial. This was up north, too, were you in that, John? I think it was Coeur d'Alene, uh, School District as well, and they just said how it's been great to have these work groups and have the community involved, because I think a lot of times when, when, if you're not directly involved with the school district, it's easy to maybe say like, oh, they should be doing this, or they should be doing that, but when you belong to a group that's trying to, you know, figure out how to, how to complete a project, or, or a need, or something, um, it gives the community a better idea of, oh, I didn't realize we were, you were having to deal with this and this and this, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I was.
Would that be helpful for us, because we do have some of those right now, would it be helpful for you to have a list of those community work groups that we already have in place?
Sure.
I will, I will get a list of those. Yeah, because I think we have some of those that, that are, that are currently happening, so, um, but I will, I will get a list of those so that you know that, that we're getting people involved in certain things.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have, we have parents.
Oh, yeah.
On every community we have, as far as, uh, we just started out this year, every school has their parental, parental advisor to me, if you will, and Dr. Lynch just sent us out, um, uh, questions from his survey, so we're, we gotta, we got parents, we, we always do better.
Yeah.
I just, we gotta, we gotta be careful with what, what the project is, and then.
Right, it just depends, yes, it just totally depends on like what, and it's not, doesn't have to be necessarily some huge, you know, need or, um, thing to figure out, but I, and it's not just parents, you know, like.
Business leaders, grandparents.
Yeah.
I think what I took from that, you and I went to that together, I think, I think what I took from that was, is unique, or maybe not unique, coming up with ways for community buying, we are, you know, before we, we always have to go, we, we have gone out for a levy every year for the past, I don't know how long, um, longer than I've been on the board, and, and we try to do things, but there's things like that, as we have community buying, if we have community work groups, if we have, if we do a better job of communicating, um, with our, with our public so that we can bring them in and, hey, will you work on this topic with us? And they vary, you know, some, some, and you probably haven't, some of these groups are gonna, are gonna last for maybe six months, and, and some of them might only be two or three weeks, two or three times, but either way, um, those work groups, you know, if they, they come back and they attend one of our school board meetings, because that's all the discussion, and let them tell us, okay, this is our finding, so the community know, hey, this is coming from you, this is coming from your peers, this information, that was a great class for us, then, to just, how are we using our parents, our grandparents, our business leaders to help support our needs as a school district? And they, that sounds simple, but this is this vast, how do we do it?
Yeah.
And they, it's gonna be unique in every school district, but it's a great way of getting buying from the community why these need to be, why we're working on things.
Yeah. Those were my three main things that I.
I went to quite a few, unfortunately I did not bring my notebook, I totally forgot that this was on the agenda, and, but, uh, I have one more outside the one that, that Andrea and I went to that really stood out to me, and it was, um, uh, safety educated, safety and security brought to by threat zero solutions. And, and the presenter, a longtime FBL. And, and the presenter, a long-time FBI guy who, who retired and went into the civil side of things, and part of his, um, training, he was using his threat assessment for school districts, compiling all the information from all of the, um, school incidents that have been occurring in our United States over the years. And, and one of, uh, his main points was that ninety, it was like ninety-nine percent, ninety-eight percent of school incidents occur from current students. Um, and his point was, get something set inside the schools where you will get the students buy-in on their own safety, because if you're gonna have, have, for, be a school shooting or something happening in your school district, the student's already in the building. So when you lock the doors from the outside to keep people out, the ninety-nine percent of the school incidents, they're already in the building. So how do you stop that from happening? Well, you get students buy-in on recognizing, and this would just go into our health program, something that, that they do, like a five-minute, here's a video on recognizing, uh, mental health in other people. Like, here's the signs that you would look for, for mental health purposes, or, you know, as a student making these comments. And then there's buy-in from the students saying, hey, so-and-so, I, I recognize this in, in another student. And he's got success stories, and it's all very interesting, something that I want to spend more time looking into, obviously. But, but that statistic that most of the school incidents occur from students already in the building makes me think, do we need to rethink our safety protocols for our own students? I mean, we pretty, we have a really awesome community. I'm, I'm not going to, we have an amazing community, but things happen in amazing communities all the time. So.
What was the name, what was the name of this?
Threat Zero Solutions was the name of his. And then another one that I went to, um, was just an other example of looking at our students' data, like, how, how they're doing, how progress report, right? Um, the possibility of this program, it's something that the, uh, school, Idaho School Education Association already contracts with. So they already have their information being loaded, and I've seen it in our boardroom. Thank you so much for putting that up on there. There's stuff that I went over and looked at, and I was like, hey, this is exactly the training that I went through, was this stuff right here. Um, so thank you for having that up there.
Sure.
Um, that possibility, the software that they use has amazing possibilities for tracking our students' growth as a cohort, year after year after year. Their problem is that they don't get the data until like a year after the data's coming out and compiled and sent back. And so I'm hoping at some point that, that we'll have the data almost real-time, so it'd be like real easy to see that track and say, okay, this is how this cohort, cohort's doing time after time after time. And, and I saw that in the board, that you had.
We started to do things in this society, so we're all playing the same sheet.
Yes, sir. Um, but to see that group, that group go, here's them in kindergarten, and here's them in first, here's them in second, here's them in third, oh, hey, we've got a consistent pattern, we're somewhere along the line, they're taking dips. All right, where do we need to make a change in that dip category so that we're not seeing that? What, what's the trend that we're seeing, the dip?
Or the COVID dip. We looked at it, we looked at it. There's, there's two, there's three years. What, the third, third grade right now is the, the class that? Is it the COVID?
They were the first ones back from COVID.
So you can certainly see that cohort. I was talking in January, I'll break in January, sir.
Yeah, so those are the ones that I had to do. I had another two in there that I don't recall as much, they don't have my notes, but those ones really stuck out to me.
I didn't write a novel down, I wrote seven ones. I, an interesting one that I went to, and this is gonna, it was interesting, um, we hear all the time about improving reading scores, reading scores. And I went to one that says, why, why aren't we out doing all the exact same things to improve math scores? And, and the interventions and the different things. And then I come back and, you know, some of the stuff we're already doing, and I just had to ask the right questions. And, uh, and I appreciate, so I, I, I went to, to, um, a governance class. I, I went, want to help, you know, improve my personal ability as a, as a board chair, as for board chairs. Um, but then I went to the one that Andrea was talking about. So we had some of the same ones. But I, I really came back from the convention after all these meetings, and I've said this before, and it's like beating a dead horse, but I feel really fortunate to be in with the Weiser School District, because the problems, I know we have our problems, I know we have our issues, I know that we have ways that we can get better, but we are not facing, in a large scale, the same problems that everybody else is facing in that, in that scale, the percentage of students that we have. We, we're, can we improve? Absolutely. Both for the students, for the teachers, for the, we can, we can improve. But we're doing a pretty dang good job, and I, I appreciate, appreciate that. So, but that, improving math score, math scores, using the same theory, thought process, interventions that we do with, with reading, um, it was kind of an aha, oh, you can do that. Of course, I don't, you know, I have never understood what math can do with Chris anyway, because that's a subject I love, so I think everybody should be as good at it as I am. Two plus two is five. But, where, I do, I really appreciate that, and I think we can talk more about, we, we love and we're, we're focused on our, on our mission, vision, and values. Can it be better? Sure, but, but that's not gonna happen overnight either. But we came up with ideas, okay, when we, when, when, and if, if and when we decide to revisit that, um, we can, we can talk about what is the best way. Maybe we can reach out to the people we met at the convention, if we got nothing else. We've met these people, we can reach back out to them, we, we've gained contacts, and okay, let's, can you, can you help us at least talk through this? That's probably another one of the greatest part about conventions, the people that we lose and, and put their names and addresses in our books, so that we can, we can ask the questions. So networking was great. Thank you, because I was, I was talking, trying to come up with that. And I was failing.
Really important. And I, I would encourage, if you, if you're ever able to go away, that's, it's a good thing to go to. I mean, you don't know what you don't know, but going there, you're kind of going, ah, I think we're getting to learn.
Language. I was stuck in a courtroom. During that cycle.
Yeah. That was great. I hope you guys enjoy it.
Mister, you had a great lesson, life lesson yourself.
I did. Don't drink and drive.
Sitting on a, sitting on a tree. That was my third convention, my third year, my third convention, and, um, as long as I am sitting on the board, I always want, because I have learned every time I've come away, and it's, it's a great way, and the state legislative encourages us to be there because they, they give us reimbursement. So, and thank you for allowing us to put this on, on the docket, because it's the first time in three years that we've actually talked about some of the things that we learned, and I think that's fantastic as well.
Yeah.
Oh, Mel's not here, does it know she learned stuff?
We, we may have to put it back on like a working session, or put it back on there, because she, she did have some great, great things that she learned as well. We're gonna keep talking about this, because that's what we want to do, is we want to get better, we want to do a better job, because we always can. Any other, yeah, communication, we had at least one form of communication, Mister Dillon?
I don't, I don't remember what you said.
To my, to my leader.
Since Mel's not here, I'm the token reader. Thank you. District Office Crew, thanks for the bag of treats and thoughtful card. You guys made my day. Dave Babes.
You rock, District Crew.
Can, can I add some things to the communication?
Oh, please.
Okay, okay, so we are gonna have a work session on January night. It's gonna be from eleven to one, and possibly we will have a Zoom conference call with ISBA for a short bit on that.
Okay.
Still working on the logistics. Then we will have a meeting on the January thirteenth, and then we hope to have another one on January thirtieth for goal setting and for, um, board goal setting. So, I mean, I think that it's not fair that, you know, we get some evaluations for the superintendent, but we'll get you as a board, need to do some goals and evaluate how well you met those. So that's kind of a good thing. Secondly, Quinn from ISBA, Quinn Perry, who is a legislator we, we have on, um, talked to me at length today, um, gets coming back up. Um, so, um, the state legislature meets, um, beginning of January, and, um, pay attention because, um, Quinn does an excellent job of saying, these are the, these are the upcoming pieces of legislation that you all need to be aware of and that will be affecting you. One of the pieces of legislation that is coming up, and for which Quinn is, um, asking that especially rural school districts, which of course applies to us, um, that, um, the, uh, the piece of legislation is, is called school vouchers. School vouchers, for those of you that don't know, is taking, there is a big pie of school money. And school vouchers means they're gonna keep the pie the same, but they're gonna cut it up into different slices. If they do that, school vouchers, we are going to allow private schools, our parents, kids that go to private schools, to get money to send their kids to a private school. We're not increasing the funding, so what does that do? That means we get less money. So right now, we're roughly getting about seven thousand dollars a student. I know that Barb would come in and we would do some trickle-down, but we talked about this today. We have got to be aware of that as a board. And I, I have, in the past, written to legislatures about some of the bills that are coming up that I feel concerned about. I would encourage you to pay attention to these legislatures, because they will affect us, they will. This is gonna be one that will really affect rural schools. Get, get to know your, get to know your legislature, your local. We have Chris Shirts, we have Judy Boyle, and we now have the gentleman from New Plymouth.
Shippey.
Shippey, yes. All of those affect our district right here. Those are the ones that, as we, as something comes up and we have a concern or an objection, we need to be, you can email them, they will usually email you back, some of them do not. Some of them, I'm, I'm wondering if I'm blocked on one of them, but anyways, um, but some of them will write you back. This is, uh, Chris Shirts, or John, John Shirts, I always forget his name, it's John now.
I know.
Yeah, this is home with Chris. Okay, so John Shirts is, uh, local here, and then, uh, Mister Shippey, and they're both in their first year. So they're kind of learning the world as much as you were when you were first year on the board. But it's the people that elected them to these positions that they want to hear from, so we are their constituents. And I would encourage you, if you have a concern, and it's, and, and every month you'll get a, I mean, every week, every week you will get something from the, from the ISBA. Quinn and, I don't know who her helper is, but we will get a list of, of, these are the bills that are coming up, these are the things that, that are good, these are the things that are not so good, and these are the things you might consider. School vouchers is gonna be very much a big topic. I, I really, I'm concerned about that one. It's gonna affect us dramatically. She just talked about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar decrease. That will decrease us even more. It's, it's gonna affect us. So, that's the goodness. Just, I just want you to be aware, it starts January one, she's gonna hit the road, and Quinn, if you've ever had an opportunity to meet with Quinn, she, she knows what she's doing, and she has a lot of connections. And she would be welcome to have you email her and ask her questions.
She answers back.
And she will answer back.
She will answer your phone call.
Yeah, yeah. She, she, I think her phone isn't as easily accessible during the legislature meeting when they're in. But I will tell you, she will get back. And I use that, use that, because whatever is happening, I mean, I, yes, road and bridge and all of those things affect us, but when it has to do with the education law, it's gonna make some big changes, but we need to know about it. So, just, that's my communication, I'm sorry.
Awesome. And I think that person is Katie Russell that we get.
What's that?
Katie Russell.
Oh, yeah, okay, yes, 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 yes.
Awesome. Any other, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
I hope that we adjourn this meeting.
Hold on a second. Motion's been made at second, I'll look at it later.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned.